The Run Me Board of Education Meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 and Title of the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by New York Fine in Retrospect, as well as most instances at the Barrow Hall, Running Post Office, Mary Bold School, Align Banglin School, Gray Sailing School, and the Run Me Public School District website. Please rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, board members.
Ms. Dare.
Here.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Ms. Farrell.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Ms. O'Brien.
Here.
Ms. Panzarella.
Here.
Ms. Sands.
Ms. Spalding.
Here.
We have a forum.
Also present, Mark Ayunuchi Superintendent, Dr. Sean McCarron, Business Administrator, Director of Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Jade Yezzi, Principal of Banglin and Downing School, Ms. Steve Harley, Principal of Volts School, Mr. Steve Maloney, Vice Principal of Volts School, and Ms. Gladys Hopper, Director of Special Education. At this time, I need a recommendation to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 14th, 2022.
Motion.
I looked at Patty first, so I'm gonna go Patty, motion, second with Maria. Maria, second. Any questions?
I'm sorry.
Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Steve.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
At this time, I'm gonna give it over to Mr. Ayunuchi for the...
Yeah, we are going to present, in part, reservations on goals, not only for the board, myself, as well as school and district goals. So you're gonna bounce back forth.
Board members have a copy of the goals in your folder as well, and then I'll be presenting up here, so you can follow along. So the first thing that we're gonna go over is the 2223 board goals. Now, the Board of Education, over the past few years, has really refined their goals in identifying the role of a board member and how you can best meet the needs of the school community as a whole. So I'm gonna go over these goals. You're gonna notice that with all the goals, some of the things that were taken out, revised, and updated, were pandemic language was taken out at this time. So in terms of moving forward, we're kind of addressing goals in that sense, so you'll see that that's the main change from 2122 to 2223. So for board goals, goal number one is always communication. Promote effective communication and involvement between school board administration and community, and these are for board members. Utilize social media to deliver accurate information to all stakeholders, invite stakeholders to board meetings for important presentations, adhere to direct communication with the chief school administrator concerning all school matters, attend four school functions per year. I left that in, that was something that the board had chosen in prior years, that the goal was gonna be four school functions throughout the course of a school year, and that could be across all three buildings. Host board meetings at various school locations during the year, provide assistance to the administration and staff with service projects. Any questions or comments on goal one?
I have a comment.
Go for it.
So, I know we got our weekly updates from Mr. Ayunuchi, but sometimes that's not enough time to have the board members who work rearrange their schedule to go to attend school functions. So in order for us to retain that piece of this goal, I was gonna ask if, like, if you know something's happening, if you could shoot an email to the principals or more to the board, just like, hey, like, nothing formal, we don't need an invitation, just like FYI, third grade Reader's Tea is happening on October 3rd at 9 o'clock, then I can rearrange my schedule if I know I could take my lunch at that time to pop in. Cause I, I had a kid here, and I didn't go to four functions. So I'll need, we'll need some, I need, I need some more time, like, not, not the Friday the week before. Anyone else?
I agree, I think that's important.
Does anyone have anything else there?
Goal number two, board member education. Each board member will take initiative to participate in various board responsibilities, earn a minimum of five NJSBA continuing education credits annually, complete the required annual governance training, evaluate the superintendent promptly each year as a board. Run Me's board is notorious for hitting those marks and having certified board members and certified board leaders. We'll be recognizing that also, see me during correspondence. Anything to add or comment on goal two?
That's really easy to do with the workshop ladies, for those of you who haven't been.
And you can either sign in to view your transcript, or if you're unable to, shoot me a text, and I can also get you your transcript for what you've participated in and how many credits you have. New Jersey School Words isn't always the best in terms of updating that information, so sometimes it's also good to stay on top of it, to make sure that you get the credit you deserve. Goal number three, safety and security. Promote the safety and security of both students, staff, and students. Continue to assess and update our district's safety and security for all facilities, involve all key responders when planning and implementing security drills, have the administrative team provide safety and security updates during the year, monthly. You guys see those in your reports in terms of fires, security, lockdowns. Support any measures the chief school administrator, administrative team, deans necessary, in an effort to provide a safe and healthy learning and work environment. And that's on the goal. Any questions on goal three?
Do they alert the neighbors when there's a big, like, the police department are here or fire trucks, when they come for a job? Do the neighbors seem to be all, like, concerned?
The schools, the, those in the school are alerted, but not the neighbors necessarily. If they did, I mean, the school would just inform them before the crisis.
They don't really complain, or just, you know, shoot.
We can, we post on Facebook, but we can rapid deployment train, so we'll post them on our Facebook page, so.
Yeah, like, I saw you guys walking, and I had no idea you guys were coming back.
And also, I feel like our police and fire is extremely visible in the community to begin with, so I don't even feel like it's a second thought when they're seen in the schools or neighboring area. Moving on to the superintendent schools.
Great, and these goals are, will be board board meeting throughout the school year. Use that last, and we may leave that, some of these are ongoing, I'll try to keep you updated until it all. Goal number one, ensure educational equitable opportunities for all members of the school. Continue to provide academic programs from preschool to eighth grade that meet the needs of every student, as well as every staff member, to accelerate the closing achievement gap using updated curriculum, communication with the consented received districts, as well as reviewing benchmark, other data scores and things like that. And also provide professional development for our staff, this is kind of being more personalized, rather than us just picking something, each time we have professional development, letting feedback from staffs, and they return key things they might have seen, and things they do in their classroom. Administration does a great job with team planning on a weekly basis, as well as, as I said, outside professional opportunities. We're excited about our open back preparation cases that are coming, and we'll give you more feedback on that at our September meeting. Provide a safe and welcoming, respectful learning vibe for every member of the school community. They push, obviously, we want every student and person in this community to be loved in our schools. We're gonna create some committees throughout the year to get more input from all types of people in our community, even people who might not have kids in their community, or just to mention, like, some of the other people, when things are happening, inviting them in as well, because again, there are tax dollars are going here from some of the schools, we invite them to participate as well. We also wanna promote, continue to promote that respectful and positive rapport we have with our parents, our employees, and our other members of the school community. We'll invite them, we do have our back to school kickoff event, August 31st, 6:00 to 7:30. We have invited various parts of the community that we've done in the past, we haven't had this now in two or three years? Last year, unfortunately, it rained, it rained out, and we had to cancel that, but we had it, and then other years were, for other reasons, I'm trying not to mention that word anymore tonight, I'm sure I will, but I'm trying not to, I don't wanna jinx anything, but, and we'll have other things throughout the school year. I know where I met, Ms. Yezzi, met with the PTA today, planned some things ongoing to kind of get back, I don't know, to the normal, back to normal, I will use it, so we're excited about that. Mr. Billy also has some things planned in the fall, in the winter, as well as the spring season, towards that. And then we're gonna keep up with our character ed development, doing a great job at all three buildings promoting their character ed. Ms. Yezzi, I'm not sure what the theme is this year, you told me June, and I already forgot.
Teamwork makes the dream work.
Teamwork makes the dream work, I forgot about that. So she'll be blasting some stuff out, I'm sure.
Some shirts made.
You'll be receiving some t-shirts.
Do you have ten months? You can do it, bud?
We do, we have a whole year lined up.
Good to see, I don't tell me, I'm gonna make me think. And then...
Not just the, all the t-shirts.
I saw some hats in the fingers off.
Yeah, exactly. But all the stamp, we wore in baseball hats on the first day, cute, yeah, it was really cute. Back into the swing, I think.
Exactly. All right, and the goal for his communication, obviously, we try to communicate as much as we can through, you know, real time, blasting out messages, Facebook, everything else, and also participating in things outside of the school, within the community, which I've reached out to over the summer, just to find us the different things, or what can we help with, and re-imagine Run Me's a big thing, they're always reaching out to us, how can we get a problem with them, we're gonna be in the space, some things they have going on. And again, just keep working with the boroughs, the police, the PTA, and any other community groups that we have. I think we have a really strong relationship, we'll see if that continues. If you know of any other groups that I haven't mentioned in the past, please send them here.
Any questions?
My goals, Dr. McCarron, you're gonna take back over the district from school?
Any questions for Mr. Ayunuchi? No.
District goals. So the district goals were developed between Jade, Steve, Steve, Gladys, myself, and what we try to do is do like an overarching umbrella in terms of what our goals are for the district, and that overarching theme for the year. So goal number one is educational health, create an environment of learning that fosters growth. Number one is create an environment that fosters differentiation and addresses the needs of students at all levels. Review all special education intervention practices within the district, so both for our specialized students and non-specialized students, but those who have been identified through our TI. Utilize behavioral, RBT, and intervention specialists, our math coach, review our IRS process, and programs that address students at various stages. Really making sure that we're addressing all needs of our students, and not just focusing on one level, but also above and below in those situations. Number two, ensure that curriculum is aligned to New Jersey student learning standards, and that our programs, benchmarks, and resources address our identified needs. Increase intervention in mathematics, we will be seeing this year in grades four through eight, so that's one of the ways we're achieving that. Number three, provide professional development, staff fostering their growth and knowledge within the profession. A big focus is gonna be with social, emotional, and learning and mental health, to work with staff and families. CPI training, which we do annually, our Fontis Empenel diversity training will be ongoing. We do have our math coach, tech integration specialist on staff, who will continue working with teachers, and of course, we will be providing RBT training for those aides who are interested. This year, we are working with Dr. Cara Eva from Rhode University on the social, emotional, and mental health aspect. She'll actually be joining our teachers on the opening day, and then working with teachers in small groups, like our character education committee, our counselor child study team. She'll be hosting six parent nights on various topics this year. We are looking to coordinate with our before and after care program to provide childcare and food for students on those evenings, so that way, parents will be able to attend the workshop, kids can then play games and have activities and have food, cause I know that those are all things that are concerned. Goal number two, emotional health. Identify ways we can effectively re-engage students, support adults, and cultivate a positive climate for academic learning. Number one, provide resources to students and families to support mental health while driving educational outcomes. We have Care Solist, which is a mental health organization that is gonna be accessible for our families and also our staff members. That company, really, you reach out to them, and they help you navigate the mental health networks to find the right help that you need. Often times, the reason why individuals don't get assistance and support is because it's so hard with insurance and other barriers, and this kind of breaks down all the barriers. So we're excited to have them working with us this year. We have our role consultant with Dr. Cara Eva, CPIS training, and then also training for guidance in our child study team will be ongoing this year. Number two is morning meetings, advisory periods, and school clubs will be focused on specific social, emotional, and inclusive practices, district-wide, to address student needs. That will be developed by our school counselors and social workers, and then also will tie with the themes that our character education committees are working on across the district. Three, use data from staff, students, and parent surveys to identify and redefine ways to address emotional health through staffing service and parent-facing activities, ways that we can engage everyone who are gonna have the biggest impact on our students, so that way, we can see those achievements and goals better. Goal three is physical health. Assess the physical facility used by students and staff to continue providing a safe and healthy environment conducive to learning and growth. So number one, engage students and families in educational opportunities and experiences within our facilities. So bringing families back into the schools, re-engaging families with school activities and events. Number two, organize the physical space to create an engaging learning environment, upgrade the furniture, flexible seating, collaborative workspaces, getting back to where we had been prior to having to change everything within our classrooms. Number three, continue open lines of communication with school physicians, school nurses, and stakeholders ongoing. Any questions on any of the school goals?
I should probably notice, but not being rounded, well-rounded in education, could you just explain your acronyms, the CPI training and the CPIS?
Community Parent Involvement Specialist is something that, that's actually Catherine Briggs. We were able to bring a social worker into our program because of our preschool funding program. So Catherine Briggs, while she's a Community Parent Involvement Specialist, she's also a community liaison, so she goes to Rotary. She works with the PTA, she works at, she's, as a community school and for our preschool program, it's important that we engage our entire school community in our programming. So she's working at Banglin and Downing this year, she'll be working at Volts, she's one of those people who's the face of our program when parents are dropping kids off or have questions regarding the program. So that's the CPI as part. What was the other question you had?
I was just, the CPI training, I was just learning, wanted to know the...
CPI training is our training for restraint training, so it's making sure that when students are in crisis, it's crisis prevention intervention, it's de-escalation strategies for staff members to use when students are in crisis. And it, as adults, in any situation, you have the ability to either escalate a situation or de-escalate a situation, depending on how you react to it. So much of it is the de-escalation techniques, then they also have a piece of that where it is restraint, if the student is in danger to themselves or someone else. And that's an extreme situation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. They will be, those goals will be up for approval through our...
Under policy of public relations, it will just be technology and goals.
Oh.
Respondents.
I have to wait like five years.
And speaking of goals, so Maria, I just wanna say real quick, you know, with our board goals, we say how we like to have our, each board member get like five credits a year, that you can get certifications, and so, it may have been five years ago where we were sitting around, and we were like, we need to all become certified board members, because Chaz and Naomi and Patty were like leading the way, and we're like, no, we have to do it too. So unfortunately, Maria had a few obstacles and hurdles to overcome, but she, she of course did that.
And I took one class like five times.
And that is why, when, and that is not, that is why Dr. McCarron will tell you that I literally will stalk New Jersey school board.
Oh, my God.
I knew I was a certified school board lead, like, leader, and they were like, no, you're not, and I'm like, well, yes, I am, here, and then, like, I would always copy him on, he's like, he would cringe probably when he saw I'm like that, but it's just because, when you put your time in, you're putting your own time in. So we just wanted to recognize Maria, because she finally, in June 22, I guess they didn't have a luncheon?
I said, what, she had the spread?
We went, we were there.
Yeah, we were there.
They attended the spread.
They didn't have, like, they didn't have, like, a big thing?
I don't know, I got sick from Adalpheus food, Natalie.
Well...
I told you that.
I didn't want to.
Oh, my goodness, that's funny. But Maria Panzarella is finally a certified board member as of June 2022, so we wanted to publicly...
In about ten years.
You wanna wear a t-shirt?
Yeah, hold on a minute. Let me put my bolts on.
So one of the things that has to, has to be done to do that is go to, so just in training, like, go to a delegate assembly, and we would like carpool up, you know, and go and just crawl, check that off of your list, and it's really interesting, cause it's like a bunch of politicians, and like, you like look around, and like, it's like, pretty cool. And it's a couple hours on a Saturday morning, you have to attend a workshop, so you guys will hopefully cut down all the way in October, so there's all these things that you have to, to do, so. That's why we made the goal two years ago, to, for all of us to...
I can pull those apart.
Yeah, it's not that.
I have a better one. Here's my good side.
That's usually in the fall.
You need one? There's two, fall, there's usually October and May.
I need the fall one, cause I need, that's two minutes.
Your next one. Okay, cool.
That's all I need.
Well, congratulations again, Maria.
I promise, all those hours, you'll never get back.
Do you have some...
Thanks, could you maybe...
Absolutely, go ahead.
At this time, we're open for public comments on agenda items only. Does any public, members of the public have any questions on the agenda? No? Okay, well, Mr. Ayunuchi then is gonna give us a quick update.
Yeah, reports will come back in September from myself, Dr. McCarron, the principal officers, everything like that. I just wanted you to put the update of what's been happening this year. Currently, Banglin and Downing, cross our fingers, most of the work, 99% of the work is done at Banglin and Downing, they're doing a great job, if you go take a look, they're ready to go. There's still stuck in hallways and things like that, but that always happens, at least. Teachers came back today to begin setting up classrooms, we were able to meet with some of them. Over here at Volts, as you navigated yourself to the library today, you can see, we are progressing with updates. Eat the staff bathrooms when you come in, we put the file down this morning when I came in, we finished up, they put the fixtures and everything else in, which will be done at the end of this week, early next week. Volts pre-K classrooms, the ones that weren't done, when we expanded the pre-K program, the older rooms, they are being refreshed and updated, new cabinets, new bathrooms, new flooring, things like that, they look great. They, they will also be done at the end of this week and next week, we talk to... Multi-Tech.
They live here.
Multi-Tech does live here.
They live there.
They have their own parking space.
I know.
But they have shortage, though, all that work will be done as well, so we're excited for those classrooms to be refreshed and updated for those students and staff members. The nurse's office here at Volts is also under remodel, that is also gonna be done by the end of next week, that needed a refresh, if you've been in there the last couple of years, we're excited about. Electrical HV upgrades are being done, boilers, so they're bringing in the 21st century, Frank and his team are gonna monitor them remotely, as well as the units inside the classrooms. That's always, we have an issue once in a while, where you'll come in and your feet will be squished, because the unit, you know, leaked overnight and kind of let us worry, so that'll be great. Computer labs and smart boards, everything's being refreshed and updated as well. There have been some supply chain issues with things coming in, unfortunately, things we ordered in June still aren't here, and we're waiting on some smart boards. If there aren't smart boards, it can be done, we have some backups, so we can use that temporarily until they are done, and then one classroom won't be done right until the prime of the year, September, beginning of September, but we'll have a backup for that as the teacher and their students as well. Chromebooks are already being pushed out, so we're excited about that. Again, back to school kickoff event, 6 o'clock, August 31st here at Volts parking lot, please attend if you are able to. First day for staff is August 31st this year, which is Wednesday, here the 31st and the first for staff, 8 to 3. First day for students is a full day, and that is the day after Labor Day, I wanna say September 6th, that hasn't changed, so we're excited about that as well. Information will be going out, some information has already gone out to parents, food service letters, lunch applications, keep in mind, food service is not free anymore for everyone, so we ask people to fill those things out. A real-time message about the parents tomorrow to update all their information, and I just told this to my kid at school the other day, so there, before you can see your child's homeroom teacher and their schedule, you have to make sure that, for you, all the information, if your cell phone number changed, home address changed, doctor changed, whatever, and we do all updated information, you submit it, and then you're able to access your student's information in the parent portal. As Dr. McCarron said, Care Solist, we sent in some information on that as well, some websites, information, and again, as to expand on existing things we have, link you to community providers and provide wraparound support as far as students and staff. It's a very easy system to navigate, we have the training, we're training with it again early September, and we push that, we share it with the staff as well, so we're excited about that. Protocols are returning to pre-2019, 2020 school year, we're still waiting for final updates. This week, we were able, unvaccinated staff were not required to be tested, that was effective last, this week, I believe, and today, well...
Effective immediately.
Yeah, it was effective immediately, the governor already announced that. We are still gonna offer testing for staff if they'd like to be tested on Wednesdays, we're gonna run that tentatively through September, to see what, what it looks like how it's gonna get done. If the participation's consistent, we'll keep it, if not, then we'll something look to end, be at the month, and then push now things back to school, and special events, back to school nights are top of my head, I wanna say September 20th, Banglin and Downing, Ms. Yezzi?
I'm sorry.
Back to school nights.
I'm sorry.
September 20th, Banglin and Downing, September 22nd is Volts, board meeting on September 21st, so gotta get busy. Back to school night will be in person, there will be a component where teachers will provide a video presentation the parents can look at to that, for the following day, in case they can't make it, or are upcoming or whatever, and we're excited to have back to school night. Any questions for me? Stop. Good. Great, thank you. I thank you to all the staff this summer, obviously, who's worked extremely hard, and I joked with Ms. Warren earlier, like, you can have meetings every week, or, you know, things were not education-related, and it's nice to have meetings about school-related things, and meeting with parents, and interviewing in a normal way, so it was awesome, so thank you to all, business office staff, school staff, and the administration. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other report or updates, they probably will resume September as well, you think?
I don't have any.
Okay. All right. So then we can move on to new business. Okay, I just feel like I'm taking my time, because I feel she would, she would ask. Okay, I waited for you to start new business.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Under property and transportation, I need a motion to approve items numbers one to three.
I'll make a motion to approve items one through three.
Motion made by Maria.
I actually got it.
Seconded by Patty.
Couple times.
Right. Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under personnel, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through 27.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Naomi.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Maria. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under finance, I need a motion to approve items. Say it again?
One through eighteen.
One through eighteen, thank you. Thank you.
Second.
Finding Naomi. Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Yes.
Miss Davidson.
Yes.
Miss Farrell.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Miss O'Brien.
Yes.
Miss Panzarella.
Yes.
Miss Falde.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under curriculum, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through three.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Naomi.
Second.
Seconded by Patty, questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Yes.
Miss Davidson.
Yes.
Miss Farrell.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Miss O'Brien.
Yes.
Miss Panzarella.
Yes.
Miss Falde.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Policy and public relations, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through three. That's where we will prove the added there is the goals.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Patty.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi, any questions there? Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Yes.
Miss Davidson.
Yes.
Miss Farrell.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Miss O'Brien.
Yes.
Miss Panzarella.
Yes.
Miss Falde.
Yes.
Motion passes.
At this time, we're open for any public comments, does any member of the public have any type of public comments at this time? Hi.
Hello.
Just state your name and address, please.
Okay, Sam Larmes, and eight fourteen or three to add. Not really a non-agenda item, I'm part of the PTA, I'm the new secretary. So I just want to say, even after a crazy year last year, we actually are excited that we're going to do class trips again, K through seven. We're going to pay for, I think it was up to eighteen dollars for each kid, transport and the event ticket. We've got all our events coming back up, Bingo's coming back, basket auctions coming back. We've got some fun stuff planned, I think Clifford's going to make an appearance at the back to school kickoff event, because apparently he's in the closet, so. We just got that up, so I was like, well, let's bring him to the kickoff event, so yeah, but we got some fun stuff planned.
Thank you, thank you for coming. And Sam, also, if you, you don't have to come to every meeting, but if someone wants to come to every meeting in the beginning, when we have like reports.
Yeah.
There's a spot there for PTA report.
I saw that.
So I, if you, if someone wants to come, you can tell the girls, or, yup, then you could just tell us whatever's coming up, get rolling that month, or in upcoming months and things like that, so you can, you can speak there.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Can I go, I just have a comment, under finance, for number eleven, they've agreed on with pause. Pause for people, I, where I work, we provide pet therapy. And it is really wonderful and very helpful for people that are. I know it would be important for children, but I've seen it with older adults that have Alzheimer's and dementia. And it really does help the therapy, having a dog there, it helps to stress situations, people losing loved ones. And I just want to say, I'm very glad that the district is incorporating that new program to put pets.
It works well, we're trying every kid a couple of weeks. We work half.
I'm going to tell you that we have it once a week at Trigun, and like, it was always amazing to me. I had to walk the woman around one time in May, because the mental health counselor was out, so they're like, Samantha will do it, of course. So I walked her around, and I couldn't believe the amount of like teenagers, it was during lunch, that like dropped down to their knees and like started like rolling around with dogs, I'm like, but they do, they love it. So we were actually trying to get it like more than once a week, because then it had, we had to like have kids sign up, and we felt it was unfair, because maybe they didn't sign up or whatever. So it is pretty cool to see the kids look like that, so.
Mr. Peely's very excited.
Mr. Peely, I'm like you, I'm like you, but like, there's other adults in my building who are like, they, they stop everything to do when, when the dogs come in, and I'm like, but the kids, but the kids do, they love it, they love it.
Volts tried to do the same, you know, because she actually did marry after Volts turned them on, and I met Gizmo, and he didn't latch on to my legs, so.
Yeah, Gizmo's not, he's not there, he's not there, I like, I know Gizmo, I know Gizmo. The little ones scare me too, I'd rather have the big guys there, but they do, and I mean, so like, it was actually, it was, it like took me back, like it took me back a second, like when I saw like, like the kids, like literally like fall down, the same, you're right, Amy, they really love it. So it's nice to see.
It helps.
It helps them, yeah, it's nice to see. Yeah, it is, I love it too, except apparently, Mr. Peely.
I was all person.
All right, so the next meeting will be September twenty-first, yes.
As a parent, thanks to the summer program, the staff, the trips, it was just such a blessing, please pass that along. Dr. McCarron, here.
It would be awesome if we could extend it a week or so for our working parents.
Or like start it earlier even.
I do that with my office.
There's like a two-week start labs, and a three-week ending labs, that don't work. We're a lot more physically, God, my eyes didn't have appointments.
We do have to get the buildings ready for.
Yeah, yeah.
That's okay.
Dr. McCarron, Dr. McCarron's probably, like, I said it, so like. Frank's probably like.
Meanwhile, I'm scared to hear you're picking me.
I know.
I'll be on vacation, watching you vacation the week of September.
Well, you enjoy yourself, good for you, you enjoy yourself.
And just a, just a thank you from the police department, to the entire district for the use of the building offered, police academy. I'm a monthly at this last meeting, but we have fifty kids. We, we, it's a long week for us, we're not used to it, so a lot of respect goes to all the teachers after that week. But the district coordinator, Ms. Root, and the staff, the summer program worked with us hand-in-hand, gave us the gym we needed, we spoke, it was awesome, so we just really appreciate it, because you guys, we can make that happen.
Yeah, we are, yeah. As we were trying, Dr. McCarron and I were saying, maybe like, the two weeks that they, that they're off, that there's no schooling here. Do it that, we'll do it one of them weeks.
We're going to, next year, we're going to have.
Maria.
Next year, we're going to have, we're going to take all Maria's ideas next year. Now, we're going to, we're probably going to have like a three-day younger kid program, and then a full week older kid program. So this year, we kind of had them all together and split them the best we could, some of the older kids did things the younger kids didn't. So it's kind of, it was a little awkward, so we learn every year, and we build on it every year. But we can only get the child for really one day, we can only get the dogs one day, so we'd have to overlap a little bit, so we'll figure it out.
Yeah, it was exciting to see all of the kids, because Sammy was like the first, the first time.
First class.
Yeah, the first time, so see how it's grown, it's pretty cool.
Yes, we went from one to twenty.
They love it, don't they?
Yeah, my son loves it.
They love it.
Thank you so much.
Yes, and so said our thank you as well, to him. So at this time, I need, if there's nothing else, I need a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Patty. Seconded by Dan, all the neighbors, I have to adjourn, thank you.